Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Newbury Board's zoning board of appeals. Our hearing is published for, of course, August 8th, 2023. It's just about 7:02. So we're, uh, we're published to get started at 7:00. So we're gonna go ahead and jump in. It's, it's while it's a short agenda this evening, uh, we are waiting for one of the applicant's architects to, uh, arrive, but there's no reason not to get started in the meantime. I'm gonna take a moment to introduce myself and the board. Uh, and, uh, we are also publishing online via Zoom, a holdover from a long forgotten era called COVID. Um, so we will be, uh, kind of operating in a hybrid mode. I'll explain what that means very briefly, but that's why the microphones, uh, and that's why we still have the outlets that will show this broadcasting video. When, I'm gonna take just a moment, uh, establish who's here, establish that we have a quorum, introduce everyone, and we'll jump right into the agenda, uh, that is published on Newbury Board's, uh, city website at Newbury Board CBA. Uh, so to begin, I'll just, uh, call the roll, um, and if you could just answer any affirmative or here. Uh, Stephen Loew, here. Mr. Ken Swan, here. Sir Walter Budchannan, here. Mr. Gregory Bennett, yes. Here. Smith Scow, here. And Patricia Pecan is absent, and I'm Rob Chant, and I'm here. Um, so the way the ZBA meetings work, now that we have established that we have a quorum, uh, we can conduct the business of the ZBA. If you're not familiar, just give a lay-in land for those online, or a few we still have, but to the extent someone's following online, anyone in the room, uh, we will begin each hearing by going in the sequence, um, of the agenda. We'll start by, we get to the public hearing section, we will start by reading the public notice. Uh, I'll read the public notice, just basically describing the application, the applicant, by name, the address, uh, as well as a brief description of the relief being sought by the applicant, whether it's a special permit, special permit for non-conformities, variance, and then just a very brief descriptor in his natural language as we can muster, you know, so that anyone who didn't understand any of the sort of sections of the code, uh, would simply know that this applicant looks, is seeking to expand a enclosed porch or add an addition, etc. So, uh, we try to make it as, uh, you know, as approachable as possible. Uh, once we go through our agenda this evening, uh, when I read the initial public notice and the description of what's being applied for, we will then go through segments of the public hearing. Uh, zoning board appeals, unlike other boards and commissions, because we are an appellate administrative board, we operate by a, uh, a set of rules, rubber tools of order. So you'll find it to be a little bit, uh, overly formal. That's, uh, that's not because we like to do it, but rather just so that we can kind of sequence everything. So my apologies in advance for that. We will start by reading the public notice. We will then open the hearing for, uh, the applicant to present the application. If the applicant or the applicant's representative is presenting, we just ask that you kind of take the podium. Uh, it's feeding the mic, and that's mostly so that it can be recorded, uh, and anyone following along online, they're also here. Uh, whether the applicant themselves or their representative, architect, attorney, engineer, all of the above are presenting. Once that application is fully presented, uh, we will then close that portion of the public hearing, and we go to public comment. During public comment, uh, we will put a slide up on the board, which just gives a little bit of the lay-in land. We ask that everyone kindly govern your comments to within two minutes. I have discretion that we often exercise at grand discretion, uh, you know, courtesy of nothing else, so that folks can finish their thoughts. We rely on folks just being, uh, respectful to, you know, others. And it was something that was, um, very heated. Obviously, just looking at the room, it's not likely to happen this evening. So, uh, but, you know, whatever. Once we go through public comment, um, and everyone in the room has heard from, I'll then open up to anyone who wishes to speak who's online, anyone who's listening via Zoom. Um, if you wish to be heard on any application, just simply click your raise hand icon, and then we will identify you, or I'll identify you by name, or if you're calling in on the phone, uh, I'll just be able to see the last four digits of your number. Uh, we'll ask you to unmute your mic. We'll do the same, and then we just ask anyone who's speaking to kindly give your name and address to Mr. Gretchen Joy, uh, uh, our keeper of the minutes, and, uh, and just speak in line. You need to be in a pro or con column, just simply, if you wish to say, you can, uh, but you need to simply just share your thoughts. For, once we go through all of that, we'll close the public comment, and we go to questions from the board. This is where the board members themselves may well adapt in some form or another, uh, questions that we've heard during the public comment section. If you pose your public comment in a formal question, please know that we mean you no disrespect if we're not responding and answering a question directly. Uh, that's only because the format of that process is for us to listen to public comments, uh, not addressing questions. So, to the very next section, uh, questions from the board, or when you should expect to hear in some form an adapted version of your question from members of the board. So we are listening, uh, we're taking notes. You will shortly hear some version of a question you've asked, uh, because you're surely, uh, you're often not alone, uh, in those questions. So members of the board will, uh, take those questions and re-posit in some form or another. Once we've gone through all the questions from board members, we close that, and we go into the final segment, which are deliberations. We deliberate as a board out loud in public, uh, view, uh, so that everyone can hear us and listen, uh, to what the board is, uh, is toiling over. We have to go through the legal criteria. The application is, there's legal criteria that governs a special permit. Similarly, a special permit for non-conformities, and similarly, a variance, they're different. Uh, and you'll hear the board members discuss whether the applicant and their respective opinions, or collectively, has met the burden, uh, fell short, fell strong, or otherwise, uh, and board members speak and deliberate amongst themselves. Once we've gone through every member, uh, to, uh, each member's, uh, until each member's contend with, uh, their deliberations, I'll close that final portion, and then we go to a vote. And under Robert's rules of order, what will happen is I will invite a vote, uh, a motion to approve from any member of the ZBA. That motion will be seconded. Once made and seconded, I'll call the roll. Uh, and, uh, in order for an application to be successful, it must receive at least four votes in the affirmative. And we have, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six members that are all part of our quorum. Uh, we will have five voting members, and I'll just state who those five voting members are, but all six of the members, uh, participate in every way except voting. Five members vote. If four or more members vote yes, that application, that motion passes, and that application is approved. Uh, so really, that's the lay-in land, and that's how we will govern things. Uh, with that, we will now go into, oh, and for the record, the five voting members will be, uh, Mr. Channon, uh, Mr. Bennet, Mr. DeWilde, Mr. Swanton, and myself. And, uh, Miss Scow, our associate member, will be deliberating, uh, participating in every other respect. And if there's any recusal, uh, Miss Scow steps in as the bid voting member. Uh, so having settled that, we'll go into our first application, uh, which is, uh, a continuation from July 25th. This is the Heavenly Green Estate, LST, Karen Lisa Mead, meet Talbot and Costa, 193 High Street. This is a continuation of an appeal, uh, an appeal of notice of violation, uh, from the zoning enforcement officer, originally dated 5/16/19. Uh, turning again if you wish to be heard on status and a further request.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Lisa Mead, meet Talbot and Costa, 30 Green Street. Uh, we're requesting a continuance to your August 22nd meeting. Uh, we had hoped that we would be able to withdraw the application this evening. However, the appeal period, um, hasn't finished running for the decision of the board. Um, and so assuming, uh, no appeal is taken, uh, we would file a withdrawal shortly thereafter, but the appeal period doesn't run until August 15th, given the date that the decision was filed.
Very good. Thank you. So a request to August 22nd?
Yes, please.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, uh, do we have, um, any comments, uh, or do we have a motion to continue at the applicant's request for that application to August 22nd? Anyone wish to make?
I'll make a motion, um, to continue the appeal for notice of violation, 2019-042, to the August 22nd, 2023 meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Channon, and, uh, we have seconded, I'll second it. Mr. Swanton seconded. Well, it's made by Mr. Channon, seconded by Mr. Swanton. Call the roll, Mr. Swanton.
Yes.
Mr. DeWilde. Uh, thank you. Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Channon.
Yes.
Mr. Scow.
Yes.
Rob Chant, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ice has it. Motion carries. Matters continue to August 22nd. Thank you. Um, moving now to the, our first, uh, public hearing that is, uh, brand new before us. This is the application of, uh, Chris Crump. The application is 390 Merrimack Street, rear. Uh, this is a special permit for non-conformities, and the applicant sees all necessary permits, uh, permissions, and, uh, and approvals to enclose an existing court space at the non-conforming side yard setback and add an upper extension via change of the roof line at a portion of the, uh, at a portion of the existing home. May we hear from them? Sir?
Hi, thank you, Chair. Uh, my name is Chris Crump, CWC Design, um, 19L Industry, Newbury Board, representing my client, Kevin McPee, who resides at 390R, uh, Merrimack Street. So in this project, uh, we are looking to, and, um, put a second floor extension, um, in the area of ACN site plan in yellow. Um, that is the area in which we've been doing it. Uh, that is the, uh, what we're looking for approval for today, uh, due to its setback, um, from the property line. As you can see, the house is extremely pre-existing non-conforming. Um, and that is 0.35 feet, uh, from the property line. Um, but, um, the extension is going straight up, uh, and then a continuation from the main roof over. Um, there is a second addition that we're doing on the property, uh, just to be clear, and that's in the pink. Uh, that's a second floor addition that's going there, and, um, that's well within all the setbacks and parameters of the zoning bylaws. So, uh, we, we are allowed to do that by right. Um, so right now, we're focused on the portion in yellow. Um, it might be a forward to next street, please. Um, so the zoning matrix here, um, pretty much stays the same relative to the board. Everything seems to be unchanged. Um, we're not raising the roof. We're not, uh, protruding further into any of the setbacks. Uh, we're simply going straight up. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the current existing, uh, dormer roof line that's there. On the left-hand side is the roof line of the main house, and for all intents and purposes, basically, alls we're doing is we're continuing the roof line on the left-hand side, straight over the covered porch to the edge, uh, to the right edge of the house, and we're putting another dormer in its place. Uh, the same exact dormer, but just bringing it forward, uh, in the same plane as the, uh, dormers on the left-hand side. This will allow us to be able to put a master, a small master bathroom, uh, inside that new configuration. This addition on the front will add approximately 57 square feet of living space. Don't remember off the, next, next slide. Uh, this is just the same, um, uh, from a different angle, so you get an idea of what the house is like. Uh, next slide. So this is what the house will look like when it's completed. As you can see, um, what we're trying to do here is make it look like it was there intentionally from the beginning, which any good design will have that characteristic. So when you look at it, it looks like that was intentionally there, all the way through and seamless. Uh, next slide. This is just the existing first floor. We're not doing anything on the first floor. Um, but the bottom right-hand corner is where that covered porch and stairs of the front door is. Um, that's underneath here. We're going to put the extension of the second floor. Uh, second floor, please. So here, I color-coded the floors again to show you, this is the existing, to show you exactly the locations of where we're putting these additions. On the backside is the one addition that we're putting back there for an office. Uh, that's a second floor addition. That's also, like I said, it's inside the setbacks and defined right. The, uh, addition in question is the one in the yellow box in the lower right-hand corner. Um, and we'll be taking out those closets and putting in a master bath. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the existing elevation map. And just be going, please. Thank you. And this is the rear, uh, elevation as well, existing now. And next one. So this is the proposed second floor plan. Um, as you can see, the office is in the back, but more, more importantly, uh, in the front, the yellow area indicates the new square footage that we'll be adding to that space. Uh, so now we can, uh, put in a shower, a small sink, a toilet, and some shelving, and with the dormer also included. So it won't be a completely full height, uh, but it will be functional enough to have a bathroom right off the master back. Next slide. Again, I color-coded it, so you can see exactly where this, uh, new addition is going. And outside, again, the extension of the existing main group just comes all the way up to the facing gate here. Next slide. And this is the addition on the rear, just to be clear, is what we're doing on the backside. It doesn't need to go, but I wanted to illustrate it so there's no confusion as to what's going on. Uh, sections, this is a permanent setting. Uh, so if, if and when we're approved, we can be ready to go. Uh, next slide. And this is a section through the bathroom. Um, so you can get an idea of, uh, the existing, the new roof line. They'll be going over the existing, it's like. Uh, and the next one, don't worry about it. Door schedule. Is that it? Okay. So, um, that's about it for the presentation. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any of my questions.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. And, uh, so we, uh, with that presentation now, um, we, we will, uh, open it up to public comment, and I'll just ask that a slide be put up for anyone that is, uh, in the room that wishes to be heard. Kindly just take a note if you're, if you've just come, uh, we like to ask that everyone kindly, uh, govern your remarks to within two minutes each, and, uh, just raise your hand. We'll recognize you, and, and we will hear. Uh, anyone who wishes to be heard in the room, yes, there?
Hi, um, if you could, please.
And you just go, I just start giving us your name and address.
Sure. Uh, my name is Steve Gagnon, and we own the property at 398 through 402, uh, Merrimack Street. So we're the side A of Butter. Uh, as Chris highlighted, there's a, a three or four inch tolerance on that property line. Um, the only thing I would ask for the board and, you know, just in consideration is that, uh, the plan that, that's been showcased is a 2013 plan. Um, I don't know if that property's been expanded. Uh, so a lot can happen in 10 years. So one of the things I was thinking is that, you know, if, if it's a reasonable request to have that looked at. Um, the other thing is the butter uses our land for their parking. Uh, it's not shown on the plan. So I'd like to see a new plan, and then maybe the property state, so that I can visualize it with the owner and kind of see what's going on. They'll need access over our land to actually, you know, put that addition on.
Very good. Was that it, sir?
That's it.
Great. Thank you. Uh, anyone else wish to be heard? Being no other hands in the room, I'll go to our online, uh, Zooming, and anyone who wishes to, uh, be heard online, just kindly raise your hand before I recognize you. Going once, going, uh, looks like we have, uh, a hand. Mr. Kevin McGee, McGee, if you can hear us, if you want to go ahead and unmute your mic, we'll do the same here. And then just kindly, uh, let us know your thoughts.
Hi, uh, this is Kevin McGee. I'm the owner of 390R Merrimack Street. Uh, I apologize, couldn't be there today because of a family issue. Uh, and, uh, I am working with Chris, and I, I did speak with Steve, we do, um, about the, the issue, and we're gonna try to see if we can work through that. Um, we do have an easement for that from, I think, the original plans when the house was built in 1999, so we can work on that. And, um, so looking to see if we can get a, approval for this, um, as it's just going, uh, over the existing, uh, porch that's already there. Uh, so I appreciate the re, the review, and I'm gonna definitely work with Steve, uh, on his questions as well.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Uh, anyone else online wishing to be heard? Uh, you can just raise your hand. And, um, Mr. McGee, if you want to just go ahead and lower your hand towards to, on your end, I appreciate that. Thanks, sir. Um, seeing no hands going once, going twice. Uh, I will go ahead and close the public comment portion of the public hearing, and we will go to questions from the board. Um, and with Swan, sir, would you, you were having a question. Hello? Hello? Is it me? Yes, Steve, there is.
Um, yeah, my question had just come up about the, the site plan, the survey, and how recent it is. Could, could you put up the, uh, site plan? I think it has a date on it, 2013. Now, or, could you, could you comment on the accuracy of this, of the segment?
Yes. Um, so the site plan was, this site plan was done, uh, 2013 or 14. I'm, I'm not quite sure the date on it, but around that proximity. Um, at one time recently, um, the owner was looking to purchase, uh, a piece of land from another butter, uh, to the north, I believe. Um, and he had another site planned done, but it was with other property lines in regards to, uh, what properties he would be swapping or purchasing from them. Um, and during that time, the butter sold their house to another person who decided that they do not want to go through with that sale. Uh, so that site plan was no longer, um, valid, uh, because it had different property lines in which they were trying to exchange land. Uh, but the site plan that was there and the one that we have now in regards to the dimensions, uh, in the direct proximity of the house and the, uh, property line that it's very close to were exactly the same in dimensions and so forth. Um, so that's, uh, that's where we are right now with the site plan.
Okay, um, and the same plan indicates that the porch is currently 0.35 feet, um, away to be going over that porch with this proposed addition. Um, can you do that without, um, can that be built just staying on your side of property line?
Well, um, we're going to have to. Um, but yeah, I need to, uh, they've already started communication, so we're gonna have to, we'll work with the, with the butter, uh, with, with Mr. Gagnon, um, and make sure that we can address that and, for you to make it, uh, amenable to whatever, uh, concerns that he may have, and making sure that we take care of any property, uh, anything that might be on his property.
Okay, I have no more questions. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Swan.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Uh, this one. Can you tell me where, where the house is situated on parcel 23rd?
One right to the, actually, it's towards Merrimack Street.
Towards, um, is that, you mean Mr. Gagnon's?
Is that Mr. Gagnon's?
Yes, that, that, one of our two apartment buildings, uh, just to the, I guess, would be south west, and that parking lot right there. Um, there's a parking lot that separates his house.
Again, I'm sorry, I didn't pick it up. Point those out again.
So there's a parking lot, um, there's Merrimack Street in the bottom, uh, angle right there. And then there's the two apartment buildings that Mr. Gagnon owns, and then there's a parking lot behind them.
Yeah.
And then there's a, a little bit of stretch of land between the property line and, uh, the parking lot. And then there's the house right behind it, inside that yellow box.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Very good. Mr. Gagnon, Mr. Gagnon.
Oh, yes, um, two questions. One of them, uh, Mr. Gagnon spoke. Were there any other butters that were spoken to? They're either pro or con, that you're aware of?
No, we haven't, not that we're aware of. We haven't heard anything from any of the butters, um, and, uh, a letter was sent out, and, um, I don't, I'm not 100% sure if the homeowner has spoken to the immediate butters.
Okay.
But the majority of the other butters, uh, the houses are fairly distant from the, uh, property line that buts them.
Right, and Mr. Gagnon is the director of butter?
Yes, he was the one, yes. He's probably the closest in regard and proximal to the house itself.
And he mentioned there's an easement. Do you know what the details of the easement are? It looks like, when you look at the property lines, they're allowing to park cars there, drive around on a dirt lot.
Right.
Uh, is that, would that also allow you to do your construction? You could?
Yeah, I, I, from what I understand, it's an easement to allow, so there's two residences as you go down that, uh, that small driveway right there.
Right, on the other side.
Kevin, if you can highlight the driveway that goes down in between, uh, right there. So that's the driveway that goes down, and then once you've reached the property of Mr. McGee, there's another driveway that splits to the right.
Right, right.
And there's two houses right there.
Yeah.
So they share that same, uh, that same street or road, or I should say driveway, I should say.
Um, so do they park their cars there too?
They have their, they park on their property line, but yes, there are cars that they park on their side as well. And, uh, to be perfectly honest, I'm not sure where exactly the easement is. Um, maybe Mr. Gagnon can, uh, detail that a little bit further, but, um, and the, and the easement and what it entails.
It, it's gotta be a pretty good size easement, because you're 0.3 feet from the lot line, and the cars are 15 feet long.
Yes, yes, it is, it is precise. From what I understand, very good sizes, yes. Yeah, they're not, they're not many, uh, smart cars, so it's.
Right, 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 it's park side way.
Yes.
Uh, someone in the audience has their hand raised, Chair.
Oh, yes, Mr. Gagnon.
If, if I can comment, I, I'm not aware of any easements, um, along our property line. As far as I know, it's the, their easement is to, to access back there, there's two or three houses. So it's the roadway that's the easement, but on our, our property, there's no easement that I'm aware of with the, the title search.
I asked a question, of course, that, so how do they park their cars on your property?
They shouldn't be.
Oh, okay. So there's no parking easement?
Correct. Uh, we're fairly new owners, and we weren't aware. This has brought a lot to light.
Okay.
That's why I was requesting maybe state the law and walk with the owner and understand what's going on.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Very good.
The owner has had a conversation with Mr. Gagnon just prior to this meeting to start this conversation and get the ball rolling on how to, uh, navigate through that and, so.
Very good. Well, I mean, if it's in, if, if it's in the sort of ascendment of the board as a collective, uh, oftentimes, we, we take on matters and vote on it with conditions, uh, and stipulations, uh, to account for certain circumstances like this. So they're conditional to that matter's side. If it's, again, even the, the beating of the minds of the board members, uh, there would be conditionality to any approval. So we do have that flexibility, um, and we'll see where that goes. As we get further, any, any further, uh, uh, Miss Scow, any questions?
I don't know.
And, um, what was her?
No, no, it's not. Good, thank you.
Uh, I don't have any additional questions, however. Um, and thank you, Mr. Gagnon. Well, just thank you for your, uh, additional, uh, follow-up as well. Um, we're gonna close that portion of the public hearing, and we'll go into deliberations. So, uh, in deliberations, of course, we are looking at, uh, deliberating on the legal criteria that's before us as a, the expected permit for non-conformities. Um, so let us just sort of tailor our discussions around the, the two-pronged approach for special permits, and why don't we start with, Mr. Swanton, if you want to dig in and?
Currently having to, um, well, we'll be evaluating any of these special permits. It's a two-pronged approach. First question is, is there a new non-conformity that's created? Uh, and there is not. The zoning major said everything was unchanged, if you will. Uh, there's no new non-conformity. Um, so that gets down to the question of, is it okay to fill in a bottom porch there as is proposed in the yellow area there? And then the question is, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood than the already existing house, which has got this non-conformity? Um, you know, it came up earlier about, is this the right site plan? People are parking in the wrong place. Um, and people may be parking in the wrong place, but that's not really an issue over the board, in my opinion. Um, and as far as this is the right site plan, it's, it's, it's signed by a professional engineer, has a stamp on it. I mean, we generally take these as, as written, and if they indicate they're parking in the wrong place, that's another issue for somebody else. Our question is, is this, um, proposed addition in yellow to create a bathroom on the second floor, is it more detrimental than what's already there? And I, I see this as kind of a minimal expansion. Um, the house is already fringes off the lot line. It's still gonna be fringes off the lot line. It's a long way from the street. It's almost close to the lot line. There's a big buffer, parking lot, and a bunch of trees between it and the next house. Um, I, I don't think this is substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than what's already there, so I can support this proposal.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Loew. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I'm gonna agree with Mr. Swan here. I, I see this as a, a rather minimal, um, expansion of, of the structure. And, um, you know, to the comments raised by Mr. Mr. Gagnon, I think that the, uh, those are, those are issues that really aren't in the purview of this board, um, as I see it. So I can also support this.
Yeah, my colleagues have articulated my position on this. Uh, this is a very small, uh, expansion, 57 square feet. Uh, the non-conformity is only three or four inches away from the lot line, but as, uh, uh, Mr. Swan said, there's a significant buffer between, uh, this, uh, the dwelling, the proposed improvement here, and we, uh, and a whole long, kind of two structures on that, uh, on, uh, assesses, not 68, part of 19, toward Merrimack Street. So I can support this as well, sir.
Very good. Mr. Channon.
Our mic is dead. I'll just talk loud.
Okay.
I agree with my colleagues. Um, I, I have no concerns. I, I don't, I don't think it's more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I can support it.
All right. Thank you, Miss Scow.
I concur. I thought Mr. Swan put it very well as to what the test is that we're supposed to look at and, um, the factors, uh, in favor, and I could support this proposition.
Thank you. I mean, I, I, I'll just share. I don't disagree with my colleagues. I agree with, uh, with all of, uh, my colleagues on the criteria, with the criteria met, but I don't think it's, you know, a terrible additional lift just out of a spirit of sort of completeness to, uh, to encourage, uh, the applicant, and it sounds like this is already underway, to engage with, uh, Mr. Gagnon or any butter that would come before us. Uh, you know, we. And it sounds like this is already underway, to engage with, uh, Mr. Gagnon or any butter that would come before us. Uh, you know, we, um. We are sort of beholden to somewhat of a rigid set of criteria in governing this work. Uh, but we also live in the world with other given things, so we try to practice that through the lens of empathy and common sense when, whenever possible. Uh, we always try to do that and encourage that. It's within our purview to, uh, condition it. We do that. But I think that Mr. Swan correctly pointed out, there are certain things that are within and without our purview. That notwithstanding, it sounds like you're all amenable to walk into the site with, uh, with, uh, uh, Mr. Gagnon. Um, and, uh, stating it and just creating better sort of, um, uh. You know, common ground, no pun intended, on where the, uh, the lines are for the easements may be. And as long as I'm comfortable with that being represented here this evening, uh, you know, I certainly would support it on its legal criteria, but I'm, I'm. I'm further pleased to hear that that's also going to happen. Uh, so, uh, with that, I, you know, I also support it. Uh, was there any other deliberations before entertaining motion? None. Uh, do we have any motion? And if I haven't said this before, for those who may have walked in, um. A little bit late, when we do, uh, when, when the board undertakes each of these segments of public hearings, we're at the last one now where we're about to entertain a motion. Motion are always made in the affirmative under Robert's rules. You will hear a member make a motion to approve. Please note that that doesn't mean that that member necessarily is about to vote in favor or supports it. It's simply the procedural method and mechanism by which the matter is placed on court. For a second and then above. Uh, so I just want to point that out, so it's not confusing if, uh, you know. Thank God, not everyone in this room are lawyers, so that means that, like, you know, we're all, we're all, this is regular neighbors. Uh, I want to make sure that it's all very approachable. So, uh, with that, uh, do we have any motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve this special permit for non-conformities to three and Merrimack Street.
Very good. Uh, we have a second. Second, made by, made by Mr. Swan and seconded by Mr. Bennigan, Colin, Mr. Swan.
Yes.
Mr. Blueisle.
Yes.
Mr. Bennigan.
Yes.
Janet.
Yes.
I'm checking, I hope, yes, that's five, the affirmative. Uh, the eyes have emotion carries, the matter's proof. Thank you, uh, for your time and your comments. Uh, and, uh. Good luck.
Thank you very much, Ford. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Roy.
All right, uh, moving to our, uh. Next and final application for this evening. This is the, uh, public hearing on the application of, uh, of Atkinson Common Realty Trust, care of Lisa Mee, Lee Talerman and Costa LLC. The application is fifteen Mosley Avenue. This is a special permit for non-conformities. The applicant seeks all necessary permits, provisions and approval to remove the existing single-family home and construct a new single-family home on a lot with non-conforming frontage. Uh, may we hear from the applicant attorney?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Lisa Mee, Lee Talerman, Costa, three Green Street, and your report. And with me this evening is the principal of Atkinson Common Realty Trust, Joel Valet, who is the builder. Um, and as the chair said, we're here for a special permit to remove the existing structure and, um, build a new single-family home. You go to the next slide, please, Caitlin. So the property is located in the R two zoning district. Uh, the existing structure was destructive in nineteen fifty-two. Uh, the lot includes twenty-one thousand six hundred ninety square feet of area, or ten thousand square feet are required. Uh, the property is non-conforming for lot frontage at seventy-nine point nine, where ninety feet is required. And a right-side setback of nine point seven, or ten feet, is required. Uh, the new house will conform in all respects to the dimensional requirements of the ordinance, uh, but for, of course, the frontage, which will not change. Uh, because the new house is, uh, more than five hundred square feet larger than the existing structure, uh, we're here due to the frontage non-conformity. You go to the next slide, please. And the next slide. So here is, um, a site plan, and you can see under the orangish footprint, you can see the hash line of the existing structure. Um, and what you'll notice is the, uh, right-side setback, as you face it, or the, um. The westerly setback is, um, now going to become conforming. And so all the dimensional requirements, uh, will be conforming. What you can also see from this site plan, and Eileen can talk about this a little bit. I've interacted here with us this evening also remotely. Um, is that we essentially keep the same front yard setback, um, so it doesn't change the current streetscape of, um, of the area. Um, and with that, um, and then I would just also note that you'll see that the backyard remains largely intact. As, um, open space, and there's no plans for, uh, Mr. Valet to remove the vegetation in the back, or the trees. I won't say vegetation, because he's obviously gonna clean it up and clear out some underbrush and things of that nature, but. Um, absent something dying or becoming a hazard, he has no intention of removing that tree line. He finds it as a nice buffer. Uh, both natural buffer for this lot, um, and obviously, um, for the neighboring lots. So with that, you can go to the next slide. Um, I'll have Eileen review, um, the architectural drawings for you.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Can everyone hear me okay?
We can hear you, Ellen.
Yes, we can hear you, Ellen.
Great, thank you. Um, so, um. I appreciate your patience with me. I ended up at home today, cause I, uh, tested positive with COVID, so I'm trying to keep everybody safe. Um, so in front of you, um, is the front elevation, um, from Mosley. And what we're trying to convey here is the changes of, of the existing ranch to become a, um. One and a half story, um, building. So generally speaking, the building is gonna take similar in concept. Maintaining the garage space on the left side, and then with more living space on the right. What you can notice on the site plan, but I could call it out on this elevation, is that we're pulling the right side away from the right side property line. And there's a fair amount of, uh, tree line there. By pulling this away, it will help the building, uh, have some breathing space. Also pulling away from the butter there, but nothing is changing in terms, as Lisa mentioned, in terms of any clearing or such. It, uh, the tree line there is a great buffer, and that will remain. Um, as you could see, we're taking a gambrel line, roof line. Um, on top of, on top of the first story, and this gives us the volume to create a second floor space. Um, adding two levels of living space. The existing house is currently, uh, twelve hundred square feet on one level. And we are going to propose a thirty-five hundred square foot home on two levels. Um, there's a small portion on the backside is just a single story, which I can show you in subsequent, um, exterior elevations. So if we slide to the next. Here you could see the rear elevation, again, very similar to the front, only reversed. Um, and on the bottom left drawing, you could see a one-story, sort of, I'll call it a sunroom, projecting towards the rear. Um, of the property. Um, as Lisa mentioned, all of the, uh, building footprint is now conforming. Um, and in fact, it's a minor increase towards the rear, just due to a, a diagonal of the property line. So while we do have that one-story projecting to the rear, it's only one foot further than the existing. Sorry, I'm laughing. My. Eyewatch is responding to me talking. I apologize. Um. So then the next slide. Here we could see it from the sides. Um, the bottom left is the view as if our back is to downtown. And looking at the side end of the garage and the, and the living space above it, which is the master, is, which is the primary suite. And then as, as I was mentioning, that one-story space is to the left, and that's the piece projecting to the backyard. And like, and then the reverse of that is the bottom right, which is the side that is a budding, uh, is pulling away from the right sideline. That I was speaking of, and that is very similar in profile to the, to the one on the left. As you could see in all of these, we have, uh, a proposal of, you know, uh, cedar shakes on the, uh, shingles on the top level. And then we have horizontal siding on the first level. Um, we propose high-end double-hung, uh, uh, windows. Uh, throughout, there are some areas that might be casement or, or awnings, um, but of high-quality windows. Uh, likewise, a fair amount of detailed trim, um, you will see throughout the, the, uh, structure. And actually, if we could just slide back to the first of the elevations, Caitlin, I just want to point out the building height. So here, as a reminder, um, the proposed mean building height is twenty-six feet, and that's going from the highest level of that gambrel. And then with a, 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 uh. Approximate ridge height of twenty-nine feet to the, to the very, very top ridge. Um, which I'll let Lisa continue on, um, how that relates to the neighborhood, but very much in keeping with, uh, properties. Um, all around in this, in this neighborhood, both abutting and then across the street. Um. So with that, I will, uh, pass the, uh, presentation back to Lisa, but happy to answer any questions. but happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Audio now unmuted.
Maybe.
Um. We can. So. I think it's on these. It's. Oh. That's. Thank you. Yeah. The system. Have the. And. The. Well. Hmm. So. 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 Well. It's. I don't. It's. This. In that. The obligation of stone freedom that. Able to um there in pre-existing ground. That at least. So. And if. Some people. Observation has prepared in existence. And. Has indeed. Every problem. Um. Then. It's. Please. Um. Yes. And. The. And. Step up. So. It's. Um. These. So. It's. And. But I can see. So not really. Back to the way you're using. Um. Um. So I'm happy to be. And what. Tell me. Exactly. Um, yeah. Think they um. The. Go on. If this building is a little. That's a little bit shorter than the street sign in the existing buildings. Moving. Some of the space sort of back and very large. Um, and then. Going up to the Saturn story or the story. Um. I think that that doesn't. That's not going to rise to the level of being associated or detrimental to the neighborhood in a what's there. So we're gonna do. Yeah. I. I think that. Um. Well. That would be. You're strong. I don't understand. That's. I have like. Like. You have. Apparently. I am. Or. Yeah. See. Hi. What. Lord. Have them. Three. Two. Six. Sixty. Sixty. Um. Just the. That. Doesn't. Can't. The uh. The minutes and the stairs and the seat data points. Uh. Support is something.
Also, I I don't think that it is it is out of place at its size. You know, it's a little bit larger, but it's not. It's not. It's not out of place in terms of uh it I think just like what was said, the crown house actually looks a little bit very small compared to the neighboring properties. So this is probably maybe maybe a little bit more balanced. Um, and what we said. We look to add how the. You know, Mr. Bennet mentioned that conditions have the trees, the tree were in the same room. Also, I would be in favor of having a condition of of keeping the substantial nature of the of the landscaping. Um, the limits that they mentioned because it is um important to the neighborhood as well as its life. But.
It's. It's. Yeah. Oops. And. Stuff. It's. It's. See. It's. 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 Then. Lou said I wouldn't have said. I think the problem is that. The most. It's something. It's. That is. You know, it's the next scale of the. Of your doing. The architecture and the setting and the respect. And. All right. We are going to. It's fine about this whole. That's. We should. We know. The other move. Thanks. Um. Pulling. Back. Being. And. Next um. That is the. Air. Or. It's like. The. Yeah. It's. Under the line of. Um. And. In the same day, the end of. Um. It is. The um. That is. It is. And. Um. So. Um. Thank you. Yeah. It's. To this. Or. Part of. Not. The. And. And. But. So. Um. Yeah. But. So. So. What? Even. It's. But uh. Thank you. Just. Well. Um. Pretty good. It's. 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 So. It's. 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 Okay. But. It's. Yeah. Um. It's. It's. Mostly. It's. Very numbers. The. Just. So. If you want to. That. The. Slade. Um. In there. So. Kind of. That's. Um. Made by those. Then. Seven. Almost. They're. Which. Very nice. And. The sling um. In. Uh. Has. Then. Um. We've got often that that is um. I have to believe. Hopefully. In fact. Um. We're gonna. Up needs. Um. Um. Good. Right. Uh. So. For any. The. You know, that you call it. Any that for that. For those who. Problem. Uh. After the. Any matter of things. Uh. It's kind of. Uh. Uh. That. Uh. Now. Um. It may then. That it can be those three or four. You know. You know. Lots of them named. And. Those. So. Like. That. Where. And. And. Similar. Yeah. Thank you. Uh. I mean. Other years. And it's. Uh. I. May. And we want to be a part of that. And. Yeah. Um. Thinking about. She. And. I want to have anybody to feel by the way that. It's not the nasty. Other years. As. President. Um. Sport. The. You. Have. That. And. Of course. Whether that. The. Or. Even. Like. Um. And. Be. Actually. Uh. Some measures. And. This. Two. That. It's have. You know, the knuckle. The. Uh. I think that. Find that. Two. You know. Um. Uh. It's. The. Um. That. It's. All. Do. Because. We like to be. And. To be. Some of the. States. We. For. Have. That. Team. With. What? Then. It. Back to what. That. So basically. Just see. I mean. It's. That. That. Yeah. And. That. That's. I. Often. Um. Um. It's. 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 So. Yeah. And. On. This. This is. On. That. It's. That. On. And. Before. Oh. First. And. And. People. See. From when. After. Good. And. I'm. But. It's. I. The. No. It's. So. It's. 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 You. How much? It's. But. It's. It's. Okay.
I think it's a nice letter. One of the things that I would. Important. Was that. There was no slight claim on. Like. Which is one of the reasons why I started discussing all the conditions. Because they had changed the slight claim because of. A. Slight claim that was presented to us. And actually not been approved by. And so. Stressing. Have been. Stressing. So. So. It's. That. It's. It's.
Yeah. Um. On. And I said. Both of them. Spent. You know. Need. The way to set. Some. Um. Um. And. Okay. It's. Ah. It's. 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 Is it? Sure. Okay. It's. It's. So. But. It. Seems. It's. Um. You need to. Depending on the.
Well, it's to be. That's why. Except. I don't. Has to be my. This the division for the relations on the.
Sure.
You know, I mean.
But my point is. Please to save yourself. I hope for. In. Do you. Yeah. S. Oh. It's. S. That's. But. Um. But. What. Oh. What. On. Oh. I couldn't. Stop. In. Switching the problem. Was getting into. I don't. Just. S. Okay. Well. I. But. Those. Follow here. Uh and she actually is that used. That. I'll send it. We. We have a. Swan sent it to Shannon um on the. Or. That. So. Mr. Swan. Yes. Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Yeah. I'm very. Well, this that. Something. The eyes have. And. Are. Um. Um.